Okay. To formally welcome you to the joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority on April fifteenth, two thousand eight at three ten. But we call roll for the council, please.
Council members and adjutants.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Mayor Drayman.
Here.
In our roll call for the agency, please.
Authority.
Authority.
Authority members, Drayman.
Here.
Lindsay.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Basian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chairman Yusefian.
Here.
Report?
Yes, please.
Agenda for the April fifteenth, two thousand eight joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority was posted on Thursday, April tenth, two thousand eight, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Let's have the first item.
Item on the agenda is Director of Community Development and Housing. This was continued from April eighth, two thousand and eight regarding proposed annual action plan for the Community Development Block Grant, so known as the CDBG, Emergency Shelter Grant, ESG, and Home Investment Partnership Act, home programs for fiscal year two thousand eight, two thousand nine. At one A is a council resolution certifying and adopting a certain negative declaration has been prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. At B is a council motion approving the fiscal year two thousand eight, two thousand and nine CDBG, ESG, and home annual action plan, subject to amendments by the council and authorizing submission of the plan to the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. At C is authority motion approving the fiscal year two thousand eight, two thousand and nine CDBG, ESG, and home annual action plan, subject to amendments by the council. And at D is council motion approving a revised financial audit policy for the subject recipients, first, sorry, for sub recipients of the CDBG funds.
Okay. Thank you. That was a long, long, uh, report. Thank you for that. A couple of things before we get rolling here. One is, Mr. City Attorney, can you just refresh all of us on where we left off in our last installment? I believe it was to continue the matter without further public hearing, correct?
That is correct. It was actually without further public comment. Public comments have already been taken. The, I see nothing in the staff reports or any other documentary information that reflects there's been any substantial change to the agenda items since it was last presented. This will be the time for the City Council to deliberate and, City Council and Housing Authority, to deliberate, uh, consider the, uh, the proposed fiscal year two thousand eight, two nine, CDBG, ESG, and home plan, and home funds, annual action plan, uh, and cast your votes. Certainly, it's within the province of the mayor if you'd like to reopen, uh, public comment, but you're certainly not required to do so.
And then the other little piece of housekeeping has to do with, uh, well, some of the, uh, comments and quotes in the paper. I just wanted to, um, remind everyone that the, that the, um, recommendations from the committee are just that, they're recommendations. Committee members, as well as the council and Housing Authority, understand that, uh, that they are recommendations. There have been some sharp pencils whizzing around. Everybody has worked very hard. Um, this isn't the time to, uh, to go into personalities. I don't think it's necessary, and I think we all understand that, uh, in order to make this work, we have to, uh, we have to let, take a look at everything that's on the table. So, with that said, uh, let me see if I can backtrack to where we picked, where we left off. Who would like to jump in? Mr. Quintero.
Well, I want to thank the Advisory Committee for all of their work, and, um, I would like to open a discussion of the actual allocations as it pertains to the social service, uh, community projects, so we can, uh, discuss our final decision on some of the funding recommendations.
Well, um, you will find that in front of you is something that is titled, uh, Exhibit Two, and what this represents is a suggestion from this, uh, member of the Housing Authority and, and council member as to a, a proposal to accomplish a couple of things. So I, I would just like to express my preference up front, and then I'd like to hear from my colleagues as to their preferences. Yes, Madeline?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, um, I just wanted to let you know, we do have the chart up front, and we have the ability to make changes on that chart, which will automatically change the, um, percentages and the bottom line.
Thank you. It's a conceptual change, and let me just state where I am in general. Um, I am, as I've expressed before, I'm concerned about the graffiti, uh, aspect, uh, component of this. Eliminating that, to me, is a problem, and, uh, so that's an area where I would like to see funding restored. Secondly, um, I am concerned about two other areas. One has to do with the New Horizons. Um, uh, the, uh, the number arrived at there doesn't work for me. I see the reasoning very differently than what has been expressed, so my goal is to try to restore them to at least their funding from last year. And then, uh, thirdly, I see the HUSC group, uh, that is attempting for their first year to, uh, to get some funding, and I'd like to see some kind of funding, uh, go there. Um, the concept here is to look at the, uh, the, um, programs that received funding, uh, with an increase over the current funding, and to take twenty-five percent of the differential and, um, set it aside, in essence, to cover some of these bases, and then to ask that the general fund pick up the, um, the graffiti, uh, component. So, if you look on, let's see if these, how this is numbered, wait a second. Well, it's basically the second page. You'll see that the after-school program, that's the club jam, is currently funded at twenty thousand. The requested funding was fifty-five, six, eight. Uh, the recommendation was thirty-five thousand. So, taking the differential and then taking twenty-five percent of that would still leave them with thirty-one thousand, two fifty, which is more than their currently, uh, the number where they're currently funded. We would take the remainder, which is thirty-seven, fifty, and, uh, accumulate that with the other programs that are mentioned here. Uh, may I mention those programs? Would you like to know what I'm referring to?
The public.
They're listed here, but I think I should mention it for the public.
If you want to, go.
Okay. Uh, there's the after-school program, uh, excuse me, wait a minute. There's the, um, Arts and, Art and Chess After-School Program, which is currently funded at twenty-eight thousand. They have requested seventy-seven thousand, five oh six. Um, the recommended funding is thirty-three thousand. Uh, by using this twenty-five percent method, the pickup would be twelve hundred, fifty dollars. The next one is the Community Outreach.
If I can, just to make clear then, for, as an example, in the Arts and Chess, their new funding, as you proposed, would be thirty-one thousand, seven fifty.
That's correct. Their new funding would still be an increase over, over the current funding.
Would you like us to make that change on here, so the public can see, or, wait?
Yes, that would help.
Okay.
You can change it anytime.
Well, why don't you give us a minute, and we'll catch up with the numbers.
Actually, if I can just borrow one of these, I can give it to them, if someone on the end can.
Yeah, fine.
I'll give it, I'll give it to them.
All right. While you're making those changes, let me continue reading through it. Um, where do we leave off? With the Community Outreach Project?
The Arts and Chess, and then the Community Outreach Project.
Community Outreach Project, uh, which is currently funded at fifty thousand. They were seeking ninety-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-three. The recommendation was fifty-five thousand. So based on the twenty-five percent number, the pickup would be twelve, fifty, uh, but they would still be funded at a level of fifty-three thousand, five, uh, excuse me, seven fifty. The ESL, Basic Skills Instructor, they're currently funded at ten thousand dollars. The requested funding was thirty-four thousand, one sixty-nine. The recommended funding was fifteen thousand. With the twenty-five percent figure, the pickup would be twelve fifty, and they would still be funded at thirteen thousand, seven hundred, fifty. So in other words, three thousand, seven hundred, fifty above what they're currently receiving. And the next one is the Intervention Prevention Clinical Group Counseling Program. They're currently funded at ten thousand. Their requested funding was forty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty. The recommended funding this time around was twenty thousand. The differential, the pickup, would be twenty-five hundred dollars. They would be funded for the amount of seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars. So a seven thousand, five hundred dollar, uh, pickup. Next one would be the Youth Health Services Project. Uh, the current funding is zero dollars. Uh, they are requesting twenty thousand dollars. The recommendation had been ten thousand dollars, and we're suggesting seven thousand, five hundred with a twenty-five hundred dollar pickup. The next one is the Create Freedom and Awareness Youth Transform Seminar, this is the ARC Family Center. They're currently funded at zero dollars. Uh, the request was for twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty. The, uh, recommendation had been ten thousand dollars. The, uh, amount of funding proposed on this would be seventy-five hundred dollars, and the pickup would be twenty-five hundred dollars. There's just a couple more. On the next page is, uh, the Minutemen Summer Basketball Program. It's the ARRAP Chapter. This is a new program. The current funding is zero dollars. Uh, the request for funding was seventeen thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars. The recommended funding was sixteen thousand, sixty-nine dollars, and I'm suggesting with twenty-five percent, uh, funding of twelve thousand, three hundred, nineteen dollars, uh, that would create a thirty-seven, hundred, fifty dollar pickup. And then, um, I think the last one is the HUSC Armenian-American Community Center. Uh, they're currently funded with zero dollars. Their request was thirty-seven thousand, one hundred dollars. The, uh, recommended funding was zero dollars, um, and, uh, the recommendation is to fund them with thirty-seven hundred, fifty dollars. And the one that I missed, I'm sorry, I beg your pardon, the one that I missed was the New Horizons Center, which is currently funded at, excuse me, uh, forty-five thousand. Uh, the requested funding was ninety-eight thousand, five hundred, twenty-five dollars. The recommended funding was thirty thousand dollars. Uh, they would be restored to their previous funding for last year, which would be forty-five thousand, which would be a, uh, we would, uh, bite into that, those pickup numbers of fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, the thirty-five thousand dollars for the graffiti, uh, component listed here would have to be funded in the general fund. And that's about as, I'm sure, clear as mud on a duck's back to those of you who are listening without being able to see this, but they're making the changes, the proposed changes here. Yes, sir, Mr. Yusefian?
Um, I like the fact that there, we are going to restore some of that money to the New Horizons. I would ask my colleagues to kind of look at the administration cost, twenty percent of entitlement. The current administration cost to administer this fund is six hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. The, the total public social services is five hundred and three thousand. Uh, it costs almost more than what the, the total funding is for the, the social, uh, services. As in the past, we talked about, uh, possibly reducing that. If we took five percent off of that funding, which I did the quick math, five percent off of six hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, which would allow staff about fifteen percent of the, for, for administration instead of twenty, uh, that would make hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars available. Now, out of that hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, the way the HUD regulation is, the maximum you could use for your social services is only fifteen percent. So if it's fifteen percent of that, a hundred and sixty-three thousand, will be twenty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, I mean, seven dollars, which you could add to some of these programs.
Hey, um, Mr. Yusefian, I just want to, I'm getting some.
Let me clarify that.
Let me start with Mr. Weaver.
I asked staff the question, can you take the administration dollars that you could save and do exactly what Mr. Yusefian has said? You told me no, it would have to go into capital improvement. You could now spread it in social ser- social services because there's a cap.
Mr. Start.
Mr. Mayor, maybe I'm slow. Can we first understand what Mr. Yusefian was suggesting, because I wasn't able?
Cut the administration cost and put it into the social services.
Except, you mentioned five percent. Five percent of what?
Five, okay. There is a twenty percent off the entitlement. That means for the total amount of twenty percent is six hundred and fifty-three thousand. I said you take fifteen percent.
Okay, so instead of twenty percent, it would be fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent.
For a twenty-five percent reduction.
Right. So that will provide a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars left out there in, to the total funds. Now, the way the HUD works is you cannot take more than fifteen percent of whatever your money is out there for social services. So that hundred and sixty-three thousand, if it's added to the total amount, and you took only fifteen percent of that for your entitlement for social services, that would allow your social services to go up by twenty-four thousand. Not much. The other, the, the rest of it, out of that hundred and sixty-three thousand, which is about a hundred and forty-five, five thousand, whatever it is, that goes to capital improvements.
I think the answer is, though, that your social services money can't be more than fifteen percent of the three million, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
Of the entitlement.
So any savings has to go into capital. You can't put it in social services, because you're.
Well, but the fifteen percent of your total three million, right?
Three million, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-four. You can take fifteen percent of that.
Okay, and is the five hundred and three, three percent of the, fifteen percent of that?
That's five hundred and three thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars, and that was all allocated.
Exactly.
So you've used all the social services money you can spend.
So you can't take part of that and get fifteen percent of that and the rest of it?
No, you can put it into capital, but you can't put it into social services.
All of it.
You, you can only do fifteen percent of your total allocation for social services. That's your cap. So if you use less administration, you can put it into capital, but you can't put it over into social services, because you'll exceed your cap. The feds put a fifteen percent cap on social services. Um, you can spend more on capital, you can spend less on administration. You can't spend more than twenty percent on administration, you can't spend more than fifteen percent on social services.
Okay.
Mr.?
All right, that puts a.
Mr. Quintero.
That's all right, I'll deliver on the capital. Hey, never, there's still a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars can go into capital.
Well, but, Mr. Mayor, if I can, I, I think you had asked Mr. Duran to come back to you with some, some alternatives and implications of reducing administration. Again, if you make a choice at some point in the future to, to reduce administration, administrative allocation, you can make a decision about what you want to do with it in capital. It won't affect social services. But I think you'd want to know the implications of a twenty-five percent reduction in what is the administration over the entire program, not just CDBG, but all of the other social services programming, ES, ESH, and homeless programs we administer, which was somewhere around five and a half million dollars is what that money's used to administer.
Correct. Mr. Quintero.
Okay, I agree with the recommended revisions, however, um, I would like to see, uh, HUSC be brought up to the same level as the new, uh, programs. There are a number of new programs that formerly were, their current funding is zero, and, uh, one will receive seventy-five hundred, the other one will receive seventy-five hundred, the other one will receive twelve thousand, three hundred, nineteen. Then HUSC will only receive thirty-seven, fifty. I would like to see a balance between those four new, uh, those four new programs. This particular program, the media for you, this is something that, uh, as a city, we long ago decided that there are numerous, numerous jobs available in the different media industries in this, uh, region, and this goes directly to that. It's youth employment with a strong component of mentoring, counseling, et cetera, but it goes directly to, to employment and training in the media field, and, uh, so I think it needs to be funded in an adequate level. I'm just afraid that won't be, that won't be enough for them to really, to really get, uh, get going. So the new programs, the zero programs, the brand-new programs, let's try to bring them a little more in line. That's my suggestion.
May I say that the reason, uh, for this is because, uh, of the, of the, a number of the programs that are listed, that were, uh, has seen, that have current funding of zero, who are requesting funds and who receive zero, or are still receiving zero. So for the, uh, for the HUSC group, uh, they are, they are seeing an uptick where they, for their new program. However, I, I would like to know whether or not, uh, we assume then that all new programs are, are equal, and I don't know that they are. I don't know that they're not. I'm just saying, I think we have to base it on more than just whether or not they're a new program.
Right. Well, but I'm talking only about the new programs that got funded, not the ones that weren't funded.
Even the ones that were funded are, uh, to, do we assume that they're all equal? Uh, do, is the scope of their program the same, or are they working with the same numbers of people and so forth, so on and so forth? Mr. Yusefian?
Is it possible to ask a question from some of our committee members?
Of course.
I, I'd like to ask a question from Mr. Alavarez, if possible. Sorry to, I just saw you sitting there very comfortably, I thought.
I was getting very uncomfortable.
Uh, one, I mean, I had this sheet that I got, and apparently this is something that you guys basically graded on different organizations. As I look in here, HUSC has, basically, none of you, none of you marked it favorably. They got, got Fs all the way across. Why?
You know, whatever scores you have in front of you reflect the interview process, the decision-making after the interview process. All I can say to you is that when we, after we saw all of the presentations, we didn't feel that theirs was one of the stronger ones, um, and therefore we graded them in such a manner.
But what was it? You did not like the program, or you did not, you thought it was, they were spending too much per student, or, I mean, what was the main reason?
I think, kind of, I'll speak for, for myself, because I don't want to speak for the other, my other committee members. But I, I, we felt, I think, generally speaking, that when you compare some of the programs that have been in the community for a long time, once a new program comes in, and there are a lot of them that came in this year, we really got to look carefully at which ones are going to give us the most return for the money. So the balance that we try to create between some of the older programs that we gave them not quite what they wanted, and trying to balance some of the new programs, at the end of the day, with this particular program, we then feel was one of the stronger ones. I mean, it was that simple.
And, and tell me about the other two new programs that you felt that they were worthy of your recommendation at the time of ten thousand dollars, and what was, uh, Youth Health Services Project, and the other one was, uh, ARC Family Center?
Again, I think those two programs were programs that were directed strictly at the youth, as opposed to a program that was more of a career enhancement program. So we felt, at least in my memory, that it was going more directly to the, um, recipients that were going to be part of those programs.
And both of them got a five-zero vote, I mean, basically, all Gs, whatever that means.
Yeah, and, and I think it bears mentioning here that when you see those results, it's after a lot of deliberations amongst ourselves. Um, I think consistently you're going to see on that matrix in front of you, that as a commission, we all, at the end of the day, felt the same way. And I think that's reflected on the scores.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, well, I, I have a question, too. My problem with the original, uh, situation from the Advisory Committee was that no one visited this site. This is a location that has a television studio, they have the capability of doing this type of program, they have television production going on on a regular basis, not one committee member took the time to visit the site. How could you possibly, uh, decide whether, uh, an organization is capable of doing something if you don't go to the, uh, location? I know some of the other sites were visited, but some were and some weren't. So that, to me, is something in the process that doesn't quite.
Well, I, I think I need to clarify that for you, because that was brought up last week by that particular representative, and we never had the opportunity to come up here and, and answer that particular item. We have never, or are we required to visit all of the proposals that are presented to us at the beginning of the year. Then once they get funded, we all go out, or we attempt to go out and visit the, the programs. So it's not a fair thing to say that we're required to visit every single proposal that's given to us. We would never have the time. It just doesn't happen. So it's incumbent upon that organization to make a proper presentation. Obviously, they, in our eyes, they did not make a presentation strong enough to bear funding.
All right, well, let me say I disagree with that concept. Uh, the, you don't have to visit every location, perhaps, but the new ones, uh, rather than just turning them down, it seems to me that, uh, they should be visited, whether visited by the staff or some of the, uh, some of the, uh, committee members, but to just turn down an organization and not just kind of, you know, leave it to a verbal presentation, I don't think that's, uh, that really works, to tell you the truth. Look, I'm looking at all of the different organizations that have been funded throughout the years, so no, I don't think you need to visit the Senior Services Program or the STAR Program, but then when you look at the new, uh, at the new organizations that are looking, uh, for funding, I think they should be visited by someone. I mean, they're taking the time to fill out the, uh, the grant applications, and if the committee members can't get to it, then at least the staff should, to see whether they're capable of delivering the services.
And, and let me respond to that also. I think that's a point well-taken. I think if we wanted, go in that direction, it's something that as a committee, we should probably discuss. Um, I also don't think it's fair then to, they all have the same opportunity. Every year is a new funding year. They all go, you know, you're talking about, or discussions have taken place about the possibility of reducing the administrative costs. If you saw the time that administration spends helping the organizations prepare the, the forms, going out to Pacific Edis and going out to the different meetings, they all have the same opportunity. They're all coming in with, with the same information. Now, I'm not saying we shouldn't consider that. I think we should. It's a, it's a time concern. Uh, but today, I don't think that it was an unfair process. They had the same opportunity to submit the same application, the same requirements, and they all got the same time to, to present to us. How they use it, it's, it's up to them.
Do you have any other questions for Mr. Alavarez?
I do have a question. Mr. Yusefian was referring to straight Fs. Does that mean that they fail as an organization? F means fail, or is that what F stands for?
No, not necessarily. It, it's, in the echelon of, of how we were looking at it, they got the lowest score. You might recall, two, three years ago, we went through a very lengthy scoring, decision-making process, trying to figure out how to score so we wouldn't go from one to tens, because we know that this is what happens. If you start looking at the scores on their own, you could easily take those scores and translate them to the dollar amounts, and come up with a solution for how much everybody should get. But we didn't want to get into that, because we felt presentations were very strong. Um, so no, an F doesn't mean you failed, even though that's what insinuates. It just means they got the lower score of any other organization that we looked at.
I guess, I guess there's a point in here, it says good, fair, and poor. So I guess F is?
Fair. F is an abbreviation for fair, P for poor, and G for good.
So the, I mean, the, the, I, I think the inference is that when you get straight Fs, you're a failing organization, certainly. There's a difference between getting Fs, as we get on our school report cards, versus getting a fair.
Yeah, and I got a little sidetracked there.
So let's, let's just be clear on that.
Absolutely, yeah.
I would, I see Mr. Allen in the audience also, so keep that in mind, sir, too. The F means fair.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Any other questions?
Mr. Deanie.
Ike Drayman.
That was.
Any other, any other questions for Mr. Alavarez?
Could be Dave. No, that's it. Thank you, thank you for your service.
And there are other committee members here that you might win quite off, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any other questions at the moment? Comment, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Najarian?
Well, my only question would be to Mr. Quintero, uh, how, how would the funds, I have, it, it was rather difficult. I mean, the proposal by, uh, Mr. Drayman, uh, Mayor Drayman, to trim back a percentage of the gains and the newly, uh, instituted funds, newly proposed funding for a lot of these organizations, is certainly. for a lot of these organizations, is certainly extremely difficult. I'm sure those organizations sitting in the audience are saying, you know, what did we deserve this for? But to, to be even-handed in the percent reduction, I think is important, that everyone shares in the pain of their gain. And as, as was pointed out, that that is going to go to backfill the 15,000 loss from New Horizons and give a, you know, a small funding for the HUSK to at least get them started. And next year, certainly is their opportunity to show what they have done with that funding, and come back in the application process, and do better in the interviewing, and whatever the other elements were upon which they were scored and graded, to come back and show what they've, they've got. We were certainly there at the facility, as the videotape clearly pointed out. That was a Christmas event, and we were there to wish Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all the members of that organization. Clearly, my words during that were somewhat taken out of context, as they're played right before the, the funding requests are being divided up. But I feel that they are very capable of making impact in the community, in our youth, and training them, and getting them in a field, in a profession that would be very well suited for today's times. I just don't know how we could trim, you know, where else do we trim from? That's the only question.
Well, that was, no, I may not have stated it right. The trimming took place from agencies that are currently funded. So that, I'm in agreement with, with that trim. But now I'm moving on to the new agencies that received zero last year. This year, we see that, for the most part, we have two at 7,500, and we have one at 12,300, right? We have two 750's, one at 12,300. All I'm saying is, instead of giving HUSK just 3750, let's at least move them up to, well, whatever, 5,000 something. Let's give them more than 3750. I just don't think.
Well, there's a reason for that, Mr. Quintero, and if I may, the, when you read in the packet, in the report, what the scope of the programs are being proposed, they're not equal in terms of their scope, in terms of need for that cash. In essence, this is a, a particular proposal where they're going to conduct five seminars throughout the year. And, and I am, certainly they can't do it for $0, but I think they can for 3750.
Well, if that's the case, then the summary isn't correct with the application, because they certainly plan to do more than conduct five.
That may be.
Seminars a year, yeah. If that's what the.
Here's what, let me read it. It says, "The program will provide a total of five seminars throughout the year, with a minimum of 30 participants in each seminar. ARC will educate youth in areas of self-aware, self-awareness, self-motivation, mood management."
No, that's the one they got.
Excuse me, pardon me.
Lucas Husk.
But it was a nice presentation, wasn't it, folks? Let me get the, the right one here.
Yeah.
Who's that?
HUSK.
It's the.
It might not be on your description list, because it wasn't recommended.
That's probably why it's not on here.
I couldn't find it either. It's not recommended for funding.
That's why it's not on here. Is, are they?
They probably have it.
Are they?
Do you have the description you can read?
Let's bring it up.
Don't you?
Can you present, just read it to us?
Just, just read it.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the project title, of course, is Media For You, and the description, as we have described it by staff, is HUSK, the Armenian, the Armenian Community Center is requesting 37,100, that was the request, to introduce various facets of the television industry to low and moderate income youth. HUSK proposes to provide services to 15 to 20 youth and family members, including at-risk youth. The aim of the program is to increase awareness of opportunities in the television industry. The program will assist in counseling and parent assistance through case management. HUSK is located in 1905 Victory Boulevard in Glendale.
Do we know if this is an operational, I mean, what, do they do any of this currently? In other words, is this additional funding for a program, or?
No, we, we know their, their program, but we don't know exactly their, their operations.
Okay. Thank you very much. Excuse me, let me make colleagues have questions. Thank you. Thank you, Jess. Is that the actual request?
It is, yeah. And if I, if I might, Mr. Mayor, the, the application was, was quite, it was not very thorough in, in its application. I think the committee attempted to clarify a lot of what was in the application through the interview process, because they didn't get too much information in the application itself.
So, I mean, that, that's my suggestion. Whether we vote up or down on it is fine, but that's my suggestion, that we just try to increase it a little bit more to at least get them $10,000 to, I think that's.
Councilmember Yusefian.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, to be honest with you, I'm very comfortable with what you're suggesting. I think the way you have worked this out is you basically are reducing some of the, some of the entitlements that they actually got a bump, so you're getting less of a bump. But if there's any money to be taken out of there, I think the place you could also look at is Intervention Prevention Clinical Group Consulting Program. They got a bump from 10,000 to 20, and they took a $2,500 cut out of there. But they basically got 100% increase, so they doubled. They went from 10 to 20. So if you took another 15, or what is that, 1250 out of there, it would give HUSK 5,000, and still they'll have a bump.
How do you feel about that?
Sounds fine.
Mr. Weaver.
I don't care. I'll get my opinion when we're done here.
Okay, Mr. Najarian.
Uh, I know it's a little more pain for them, but, you know, I guess to do anything less than that is we're almost going to get down to the dollars and cents for the remaining. So I could, I could live with that.
So just to clarify, Mr. Yusefian, you're suggesting that on that particular item line, where they got a, where they were, basically their, their current funding was doubled, which was considerably more than any of the other groups that got a bump. Right. To take an additional, what did you say? 1250?
1250. I would, I would take them down to 16,250.
16,250.
And I would take HUSK up to 5,000 either.
Right.
And leaves the total the same.
One second here. Okay. All right. Do I have any other comments on that proposal right at the moment?
Are we going to take these separately, Mr. Mayor, or move?
That is a good question.
Service and capital, or?
And I don't know whether there's a requirement one way or the other.
I'd like to put the, put the service to rest, and then move to capital.
Your, your motions have them all lumped in together.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can make a separate motion, can't we?
I imagine you can, yes.
May I ask what the?
Because we can, we can.
I know that we can, I've heard it, but my question is, what is, why? I just want to know why we're doing it.
Easier for them to write it. You don't have 50, 50-line items on motions.
If I can, the motions are all written to, unless you wanted to go on and make changes in other areas, the motions are all written to approve everything at one time. So if you split them out, the city attorney will have to craft separate motions, but.
That's the only reason I'm asking.
So unless you were going to go on and change capital or change some other aspect, if you're settled with these changes, then, then I would adopt these motions as amended for the CDBG program.
Well, we have to move A through C.
But you have to move A through C anyway.
The revised financial audit's a different.
The audits are a separate topic we'd like to address.
Okay, well, I'll move 1A through C.
One's a housing authority motion, so.
A and B are council.
A and B. A and B are council, yes.
All right, for the city council, I'll move 1A and B with the recommendations as presented on the screen, and that includes moving the HUSK up to 5,000 by balancing the CASF funding.
Second.
Wait, wait, what happens to the, that's just on this, right?
Just service.
Right. Just service. Okay, that's fine.
Well, let's, let's clarify.
Hold it.
Because this motion will also approve the ESG home and the capital. And the capital. That's what I say. Unless you want to move on and make some changes in capital, the two city motions would approve everything, capital, CDBG, social services.
Yeah, and you may want to handle A's. If, if that's what you really want to do, A is really the environmental document. You can handle that one separately, and it's not going to be affected.
Well, excuse me, I'm still not getting a clear reason as to why we're attempting to split these up. Is it the intention of my colleagues to go back and, and to, in other words, are there issues you wouldn't want to debate on each of these, or?
Let's go back to the capital then.
Though it's likely to foreclose any return to the discussion of the service.
Why don't, why don't we vote on, then, the, the motions as they are, but as amended? In other words, as they lay out, but as amended?
For social service.
Yes.
We can do 1A.
That's my motion then, for 1A.
Okay.
Second.
1A is just the, the neg deck.
Right.
There's a motion, a second, for.
Minister City Clerk.
Councilmembers Najarian.
This is 1A.
1A, yes. Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Drayman?
Yes. Okay.
Should we go to capital now?
Uh, yes, we can do that, but we have to do 1B.
Now, 1B will include capital. Yeah. Right now, as, as written, 1B is where you'd want to split them out, if you want to split them out.
All right, I moved 1B, splitting out the social service programs only.
Second.
Motion and a second. Hold, please. Mr. Weaver.
Now I'll make my comments.
Thank you.
Same comments I've made for 11 years up here. Staff used to put together a CDBG committee, then council decided to do it, which Brown acted it and put it on TV. As far as I know, the committee members over the past 11 years I've been here have put in hundreds of hours researching us while we sit up here and scratch the surface. In my own humble opinion, and it's just mine, we sit up here, we're playing politics. When you don't listen to your own volunteers that put in the hundred hours that know way more than we do about every program, and what 2,000 here might do as opposed to 2,000 there, are you eliminating a staff person? Are you eliminating a program? Are you cutting hours? Are you adding? We don't know all those details. We don't know the consistency of the program and how good it is. We put out five people, we each picked one, that we think are good people to do it. And then we sit here, in my humble opinion, we play politics. So I will absolutely support whatever my four colleagues want to do, because there's no way on God's green earth we're going to satisfy everybody with the limited funds we get, which keep decreasing every year. And in this economy, I feel for every organization that has requested and is not getting what they need. The needs in this community are great, and we just don't have the money. It's sad. So you can split the baby any way you want, and I'll support it, because there is a need there. So take the vote.
I have a comment. Let me just say that we have spent hundreds of hours, maybe it's even thousands, hundreds of hours going over votes having to do with the Board of Zoning Adjustments, the Planning Commission, the Design Review Board, the Glendale Water and Power decisions that those boards and commissions made, that we as the city council, the ultimate authority in these matters here, city of Glendale, we disagree with what they say. They're also trained, the DRB, for the most part, have trained architects, et cetera. We disagree with their findings, and we make our own decisions. So this is no different from any of the other boards and commissions that we continually, I shouldn't say we change their decisions, but quite often we do, actually. For the most part, we do. That's why they're here. Someone is appealing, the BZA and planning and so forth, and we make the ultimate decision. This is no different.
All right. Let's call the roll. Oh, excuse me.
Mr. Chair, in my view, the motion is somewhat ambiguous. The, the way it was crafted was, or the way it was stated was to carve out the social services component, and the way the motion is drafted is you're essentially approving everything in here. So I'm going to offer up an alternative motion, which I think is where you really want to go. And you can certainly correct me if I'm wrong. And drawing on.
I'm sure my colleagues will, Mr. Herr.
Well, drawing on the template that we have, is that the city council has reviewed and approves the fiscal year 2008, 2009 annual action plan for the social services component of the community development block grant programs as amended by the council, April 15th, 2008. I think that's what, what I was hearing that you wanted to do.
That's what he said, and that's what I second.
I will move that.
All right, second. All right, let's call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Drayman?
Yes.
Well, let's go do the capital.
All righty, for the redevelopment.
Cap.
Excuse me, for housing, the capital. Wait a minute. Uh, motion, just for my own clarification, motion D, or 1D, rather, is that is the audit, and that is separate, correct? We already said that. All right, sorry. Okay, let's go to the cap.
Go to the cap, or you do have a motion at 1C for the housing authority, which, as amended, could be identical to 1B.
I'm just going to wait until we're done with the capital. All right, is this what the capital is?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
See, can we turn the lights down?
Sure.
Thank you. On the committee is on the right?
On the right, yes.
Correct.
All right. And the motion is to approve the, the committee's recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. I was, just don't go, I have a question. Mayor, if you don't mind.
Yes, absolutely.
I actually attended one of the hearings. I don't know if you saw me there or not, but I was there while you guys were going over this. And actually, the, the issue that was discussed was over the 1.2 million dollars. You said something there, and I want you to let me know if I, whether I heard it correctly or not. Currently, how much money have we accumulated in that account for the pool?
Yes, Mr. Starbuck.
Can I help here? Because I looked it up last week.
Okay.
You have 1.4 million dollars in grant money. You had 1.2 million dollars from this fiscal year, CDBG, so that was 2.6. The CIP funding program anticipated two more years of 1.2 million from CDBG, this being '08, '09, then there'd be one more year, '09, '10. So the implication of this is, if this is approved, as outlined, there's roughly $300,000 and you need to increase the funding next year. So there'd be $300,000 less capital next year if you made up for it in that way. So CDBG was going to be 3.6 million dollars each in, each of three years, $1,200,000 a year. You did '07, '08 this year, '08, '09 next year would be another $1,200,000, unless this is approved, in which case you're out of whack by $300,000. You need to add that to '09, '10, which would put '09, '10 at a $1,500,000. If that were pre-designated, they'd have $300,000 less in funding in '09, '10 to allocate for capital.
Question, question, further question.
It's a follow-up. Yours. In essence, we're banking the money. We're not doing any design, aspects, anything. We're simply banking it.
No, we, no, the CIP anticipates doing design work, but, but you, well, you have plenty of money to do the design. You'd need to have the full amount of money funded before you could let a bid.
Yes.
Because you have to appropriate to let a bid, but the actual construction wasn't anticipated until fiscal year nine, ten. Yes, nine, ten. So, as long as you make up the three hundred thousand, by the time we get to that final CDBG year, you'd be okay.
And you expect to expend all the money on the contract in one fiscal year? Wouldn't be carried over into two years?
You know, we probably wouldn't know until we get the design and see what the construction schedule would likely be on it. Uh, I don't know, I don't know how long they expect to build a pool, but from the time you let the bid, let's say it occurred in July, you might be able to get it all done by the end of the fiscal year. It's conceivable.
Or it could be if we chose to, two-year contract.
And that's, that's what I was going, where Mr. Weaver's going, because what I heard is, and I think the committee also heard the same thing, which is this will not be done until two thousand eleven.
Let's get an answer, if we can.
So, you got your new hat on?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Pool Boy is here.
That explains why your hair is all ruffled up.
We, uh, we would anticipate starting construction, uh, in July of oh nine, and so the, the course of construction could conceivably be twelve months, it could be eighteen months. I don't have a number on it yet, and we wouldn't want it, we, we could go out to bid, but we wouldn't enter a contract until we had all the money in place.
If I can, you, you have to be able to appropriate the money when you let the contract. So, even though from a cash flow standpoint, you may depending on some cash flow in a subsequent year, maybe the project does flop over, so you don't need to necessarily expend all of the money. You do need to be able to appropriate it, so you need to recognize a revenue source for it at the time you let a contract.
But my recollection is when we did the, the Pacific Park, we didn't have all the money. We moved in, and there was all this extra appropriation that needed to be made afterwards. So, we didn't have all the money. I mean, we were short a few million dollars, but we started the project, and by the time the project was catching up, we caught up and also paid the extra work orders, too.
All I can say is you can't let a contract unless you can appropriate the money. If you can't recognize a revenue source or take it out of reserves, then you don't have anything to appropriate it from. Now, within the CIP, you might very well be able to appropriate it from reserves, anticipating you're gonna catch up. I presume HUD would let us repay ourselves if they, uh, went over into a subsequent fiscal year, but what I do know is you, you have to have the money appropriated in order to let a contract.
Okay, Mr. Weaver.
Okay, then I guess, can I recall my years with the Corps? We had continuing construction projects, projects that were funded at sixty to eighty million dollars. We didn't have all the funds to award the contract. They were continuing contracts, and they were first priority in funding in the out years because the Congress of the United States doesn't fund, uh, fund multi-year projects with all the funding in the first year to sit on the books. There would be a cash flow problem if ever a project, like Prado Dam, which is in the billions. You had all that money sitting in the bank waiting for, uh, the contractor to expend it. It was multi-year appropriations. So, maybe we do it different in the city. That's what it was at the federal government level.
Mr. Quintero.
Well, the bottom line is moving, uh, the money out of the, uh, pool project is not going to impede our ability to build a project. It's not gonna slow down the, uh, the process. Is that correct?
Councilman Quintero, is, as long as we have the, the money re-established in the following fiscal year, I, I don't see that it would. We would be able to let the bid...
Excuse me, folks, hang on a second. Mr. Starbuck.
With, with the caveat, if you decide not to, we just have to go find some other funding source for it. I mean, if you continue to decide you wanna take it from CDBG, uh, I guess there's a possibility, and we'll explore whether legally, when you left the contract, can we have a funding source that would essentially flop over into a next year because the construction does, but at some point, you'll need to make a decision. If we do nine hundred thousand here, next year will we do the million two? Will we do more than a million two to catch up, and if we don't, where will we go find the money? I mean, it'll just be a capital improvement decision for you next year. For now, this project has three point six million dollars funded out of the three years of CDBG. Uh, if we get to oh nine, ten, uh, you can revisit that question again, but we wouldn't anticipate this will hold up construction, provided by the time we get there, we've got the roughly five million dollars or so we'd anticipated. You, as yet, have not also received the specific design. I remember you asked the consultant also to bring you back some options for larger pool that would generate more revenues. You may decide you want a pool that's gonna cost considerably more than the resources you have here, in which case we're gonna be coming back the CD, the, uh, CIP program to figure out how to, how to make the ends meet, anyway.
All right, uh, let me ask, just one second, Mr. Yusefian. Mr. Mincy, in this... Rosa, we haven't heard from either of you. Do you have any comment to make? I don't want you to be intimidated. Please jump in if you feel so inclined.
My comment, um, I, uh, the fact that it's, you've gotta make it up at some point, and is next year gonna be worse than this year? Who says the, uh, you know, that we're gonna have the money next year? There may be even larger needs, and that was my only concern in seeing that we're gonna do it later on.
I, I hope you understood, folks, what he meant. It's just his only concern that there's a lion standing behind you with its teeth like this. Okay, Ms. Barazian.
Call the Congress.
So, so, uh, budget is so tight, the funds are so tight, so I don't think something's gonna happen.
Hopefully not, huh? Uh, Mr. Yusefian, I think you had your hand up there, Mr. Quintero.
Uh, yes, and, uh, my, to continue my train of thought, uh, I had a question from Jess Duran, which is currently there is one point two million dollars, that is CDBG money from the previous year in that account. Right, so with addition of, let's assume, uh, another eight hundred thousand to it, that will make about two million dollars. Now, HUD has had this real, was very stricter about spending the money that they give you. Would that jeopardize anything for us? What is, what is the limit before HUD starts screaming bloody murder and says, "Give my money back"? That's what I wanna know.
Yes, Councilman Yusefian, the process is that, um, every April, HUD analyzes our expenditure rate. If we're too far behind, that is to say we're not spending at a rate of one and a half times our, our grant, they will send us a letter, and they will ask us to provide a, a schedule on when we anticipate to catch up with that expenditure rate. And so, at that point, we would get together with the Parks Department. We would figure out when they would start spending that money and submit that to HUD, and then typically HUD will allow us an opportunity to, to make it up. Uh, we really get into trouble if it, if it happens two years in a row, but, but, but one time.
So, let me ask you a question. Would, would, would the strategy be to start spending this money, the one point two million dollars, for your planning and design and all that stuff, since there is all kinds of controls over it instead of capital improvement?
Exactly.
Okay, got it. So, that's how you intend to skin the cap. Oh, I shouldn't have said that.
Okay.
Peter will be after.
Mr. Quintero.
Well, I can, um, I can go along with the recommendations this year. Uh, I will tell you, though, that next year I'm gonna seek, uh, backfill of the three hundred thousand that was taken, and, uh, in the most strong terms, uh, indicate that that is gonna be pre-designated with a lockbox, booby-trapped, double-chained, uh, with a pit bull standing in front of it, and the pit bull is gonna be me. So, that's for a future discussion, but I want everyone to know. Commissioners out there, my commissioner, uh, Madeline, anyone else, Parks Department, uh, next year, as was indicated to you, it can be caught up. I intend to catch up on that funding.
Councilmember Quintero.
Mr. Quintero, I'm gonna be holding the leash because, uh, nothing is more important for me than to have that, uh, pool built and to be built as soon as possible. We can get rolling on this tomorrow, as far as I'm concerned. However, in this case, obviously, the money's going to, uh, do a good, uh, project, and in addition to that, it's not going to, uh, by holding this money, we're not going to in any way impede the progress of the pool. So, that, to me, is what makes, uh, what makes sense. The organization will be able to build out their building, and we haven't affected the, uh, time that it's gonna take to, uh, to actually build the pool, so I'm fine with the recommendations.
Okay, any other comments before we, before we leave, uh, leave this?
Make, make a comment?
Oh, yes.
I simply wanted, I, I think, uh, Mr. Yusefian was leaning towards this, and I think it needed to be said. From the committee's side, I think the thinking that you're capturing is exactly what we were thinking. That is money that we intend, assuming we have the same five commissioners next year, uh, we were, our discussion had to do with the fact that next year we would support and put back the three hundred thousand, because it's money that could be used for a center right now that's ready to start in construction. It's, it's better use for the money this particular year. So, I think you can count on the committee to be back next year and support your thinking. That's what we were thinking all along the way.
Very good. So, no one will be surprised if on top of that lockbox, sitting next to the pool, is also with the, what was the other imagery? A pit bull and a...
He's holding it.
Water slide, Mr. Quintero holding, and perhaps let me throw in Margaret Hammond in a bikini on top of the pit bull with water wings.
Is that gonna be the cartoon?
Wait, wait a second. Do you guys want to even serve on that committee now with that picture in your mind?
Do we have a motion?
I move, uh, the recommendations of the advisory committee.
Capital program. Yes.
Capital programs.
Second.
Okay, Mr. City Clerk, please.
Councilmembers, enjoy.
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Drayman?
Yes.
I'll move, uh, one C.
What? Mayor?
Yes, Mr. ...
Do we still, Mr. City Attorney, have the ESG and home annual action plan now that need to be approved?
Yes, sir, we do.
Oh, another motion.
So, they would be one B for the ESG and home annual action plans as submitted.
Second.
Motion is second, Mr. ...
Seconded by?
Mr. Quintero.
Quintero.
Councilmembers, enjoy.
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Drayman?
Yes.
Now, I'll move, um, one C for the housing authority.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion is second, roll call.
One C is as amended consistent with the three motions adopted under one B.
And that's what he meant, right?
Right.
Mm-hmm. Roll call.
Committee members, Drayman?
Yes.
Mincy?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Barazian? Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
And Chair Yusefian?
Hi. Move one D.
Second.
All right, motion is second for council. Mr. City Clerk.
Councilmembers, enjoy.
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Drayman?
Yes.
Chairman, just...
Yes.
I, I, they've all left, I think, most of these, um, organizations, but they might hear me as they're, they're going out. We have wonderful organizations in this town that are really helping many, many, the youth and the, and the, uh, children, and, uh, we appreciate it as a city and wish we had more money, but we do appreciate all the work they do.
And, uh, thank you, Mr. Mincy, and I'd like to add to that. I'd like to thank the committee.
Yeah.
There is, uh, this was a lot of hard work, I realize. Um, and it is, uh, you can characterize what the council is doing up here in a lot of ways, but we also are accountable directly to the public. They elect us here to use our common sense and our judgment, too, uh, because as elected officials, we also have a broader purview of community needs sometimes than those who are not elected and don't have the opportunity to, uh, work and interact with a lot of these organizations. Um, your work I appreciate. I know that you know that these recommendations were, uh, mostly followed, and to the extent that there were some tweaks made here and there, I hope you appreciate that as well.